And one final play of the North Korea National Anthem for Taylor, who defeated all of us by going to the most conventions of anyone in the city. I think eight, eight of the thirteen? This is Taylor's fatherland. The vanity had taken over. You were like, I don't like how I look in these pink headphones.
It's too much shit on my head. It's a wig, it's a hat, it's a headphones. I'm just drowning and it's that, I think you should leave skit, you know, where it's like, I got too much shit, all this shit on me, that's how I feel.
Does, does Taylor get a raise now that, from the dark money funders, now that she's our top public safety reporter?
Uh, no, you, you are still all unpaid employees of Wedge Life at this point. I don't care how much legal wrangling we get entangled in, uh, how many law enforcement raids, federal raids that Taylor has caught in the middle of, there will be no, I have no, there's no juice, uh, left to squeeze for me.
I got my badge now, so I got that.
You get free badges? Is that not enough?
I got, I got, I got a badge and a coffee mug.
Right, and you didn't break yours, unlike Taylor who smashes hers.
I have not broken mine.
I've only broken like two of them so far.
That's a lot, that is a lot of breakage.
I don't ever break any of my coffee mugs, but for some reason those, I just.
They're not, they're not fragile. I still, I use this every episode and it hasn't broken.
I don't know.
What do you do? Do you drop it?
I think it just, they just fall in my sink, which is like a, like a ceramic farmhouse style sink. So I think the, the two materials just meet and just each time. And it's always, it's always the handle falls off specifically.
The fun part is I don't replace them. You get the first one for free and you have to buy the rest.
And then, but you're suckered though, so you just keep doing it.
Did, who gave you a free one? Was it Melody who gave you theirs?
You did, at the, um, the Wedge Live, um, the family reunion in Paula's backyard in 2022.
Right, I gave you the first free one, but did someone give you their spare, their free one to replace the one you broke? No?
No, I think I've bought two replacements.
Keep buying. I think, oh, I know what it was. I think Melody broke hers and then Jason may have replaced that for her.
So Taylor is one of your dark money funders now, John?
It's true. More, more money, more money has passed from, it's probably true, more money has passed from Taylor to me than me to Taylor. I will testify to that.
This is like a pay to play type thing.
I bought some merch too. Right, we're paying for the privilege of working for the Wedge Live media empire.
Unfortunately, all my employees pay me more than I pay them. That's how, that's how beloved I am as the, the patriarch of the Wedge Live family, the money comes to me. Well, thank you all. I appreciate the support. Okay, this is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Joining me today, Taylor Dallin, uh, special correspondent, special public safety correspondent. And Josh Martin, which correspondent are you, Josh? Numbers guy?
I, I, what, what does my badge say that I just got?
Yeah, hold your badge up to the camera there.
Chief political analyst. It's official because this badge says so.
Yeah, chief political analyst. Okay, and I thought we would start out with the way overdone, uh, federal raid at, uh, Lake Street in Bloomington.
Shoving from both sides. Law enforcement used a high pitched noise to try and disperse the crowd.
Dozens of federal law enforcement officials, officers present, many of them wearing masks, which we have come, uh, to, to see a lot across the country when it comes to like immigration raids, ICE raids. But they're claiming it wasn't immigration related. Drugs and money laundering is what I've heard, though we have not established exactly. MPD was there, Hennepin County Sheriff was there, in addition to ICE, ATF, DEA, FBI. Uh, have I missed any? It was a bunch. It was overdone. There was an armored personnel carrier. Doesn't make sense, and I don't know if they even arrested anyone. Taylor, what did you see out there? You were there live.
I don't know if they arrested anyone either. Um, there was somebody at least, um, like a protester was detained at one point. They had someone on the ground. Um, and then I think in the end, they just took like boxes from the taco restaurant or some other nearby building, but I don't, they, they claimed there was no arrests. Um, and I, I didn't see at any point when I was there, anybody like any people being removed anywhere. Just a lot of standing around. But yeah, armor tanks, at one point they used either pepper spray or like shot pepper balls when people were on the bridge and then someone was like knocked to the ground. Um, and may, maybe even had that like a concussion. I saw them like federal agents multiple and just like shoving people.
I saw somebody on Blue Sky mention like, this is what you would do if the intention is to incite people. Like assuming their story is accurate, that this is not immigration related, not, not a, not necessarily a safe assumption to make. But, uh, this is why we don't mix immigration enforcement and traditional law enforcement, because it delegitimizes any law enforcement activity when you do that. You want people to cooperate. You don't want people to assume the worst, that you're here to be, uh, the papers please people. This is why we don't do it. This is why we don't want MPD cooperating. We don't want Hennepin County cooperating with immigration enforcement. Because they would be unable to do their job. It would get in the way of doing actual law enforcement. Josh, have you heard anything? I saw you doing some Kingfield reporting.
Yeah, um, so I had been, um, posting the various public statements that have been made by the city of Minneapolis and MPD and Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, and I've always said claims, um, which I intend as a neutral choice of word, like they may be telling the truth, they may not be telling the truth. I don't know. Um, and I think that's a good way to approach law enforcement statements these days, um, based on, on some of the things that they have said in the past. Um, someone reached out to me and said that they saw, um, a large group of federal agents with ATF prominently among them, maybe the same people, uh, serving a search warrant in the Kingfield neighborhood at the crack of dawn this morning. Um, they also said nobody was removed from that location that was raided this morning. Um, and so they speculated that that may indicate the law enforcement activity today was not immigration related.
So what I need to hear in the aftermath of this is that they arrested a murderer, like a gang member who's just like guns must be involved. Many murders have been involved. Cause I don't understand why you come in so heavily militarized. Uh, it was ridiculous.
Yeah, especially if, you know, if you know you're showing up like this in, you know, on East Lake Street, an area that's already kind of on high alert for any kind of ICE presence. And so if it isn't an ICE or an immigration thing, feels like doing that is almost like just trying to cause fear and scare people even more.
Right, okay, well, more to come on that, uh, but we, that's all we have for now. So we did part one of our convention, uh, I think we called it the halftime show. As we had gone through the DFL conventions to endorse city council candidates here in Minneapolis. And so, uh, we've done the second half. We have completed that. And so we can provide, uh, analysis of conventions that have happened in, uh, three, six, seven, nine, 10, and 11 have all happened since then. I don't imagine we have a lot to say about three and six. Is that right, Josh?
Uh, I think that's right. There's probably not a lot to say about three and six.
We recruited, uh, Derek, my friend Derek, to handle three. And I had to admit to Derek, when I saw him in person, I didn't read a single one of your posts about Ward Three. That's how little I cared. And how little I thought was gonna happen there. Did you read any of Derek's posts? We recruited him to do this.
I mean, um, I might have skimmed them. I certainly read the one with the final results.
Okay, you skipped to the end. That's good. Sorry, Derek. He was a delegate. He was gonna be there anyway. Thank you, Derek. We appreciate your service. It's thankless because we didn't care at all.
They're, they're all there now. If anybody wants to know what happened at Ward Three.
Yeah, Josh will link to Derek's posts in, in one of Josh's spreadsheets that I don't read.
And I have.
Ward Six, uh, what was the outcome there?
Uh, Jamal Osmond wins with North Korea numbers. Um, his opponent, um, Hamud Hassan, uh, dropped out, um, the day prior to the convention. Um, so Jamal was endorsed by acclamation.
Do I have to play the North Korea numbers for, will I get in trouble? Will I be associated with Jamal Osmond? I know people don't want to be associated with Jamal Osmond. So if I play him the North Korea theme song, am I, uh, do I get caught up in his corruption there?
I mean, didn't you play the North Korea numbers for Latricia? Like, I don't think anyone would accuse you of being associated with Latricia Vata.
Me, me playing the North Korea anthem is not an endorsement for me. It's just a factual statement. Here we go. Congratulations, Jamal Osmond.
I guess that can be for Rainville too.
Yeah, here, we'll play a little for Rainville too. Okay, congratulations, Michael Rainville. And so I thought we would start with ten because that's the most recent. You guys wanna start? Uh, Taylor, do you have any thoughts about ten? You were up in the balcony. I was a delegate. What did you see up there?
It's a very similar vibes to Ward Seven. I mean, it just, it just strikingly similar in terms of how the people who were the most difficult and the most kind of raring to fight and not obey the rules were the most wealthiest homeowners like in the ward. I mean, it just, the shoving at both conventions, you know, just very similar to that. Um, I was very glad they just ended it after the first ballot. Um, the whole labor proudly being, uh, not endorsed by labor at all from Lydia was a pretty, pretty wild answer.
Yeah, I'm trying not to jump to conclusions because, uh, there are a couple of positions Lydia has that I find just, uh, against my entire way of life. I, I could not be a more opposed or candidacy based on the positions she's taken. So when I he- heard the labor answer, I'm trying not to be overcome by my own bias and assuming she was answering that proudly, but I've talked to a bunch of people and like, that's how people are interpreting what they heard. Josh, you are our dispassionate computer brain spreadsheet guy. Did you hear that answer?
Um, so I, I didn't hear it in person. I was at Ward Eleven for most of the day. Um, I only arrived at Ward Ten for the tail end of it. I have heard the audio you recorded of it and I, um, I agree with that take that it seems like she was proudly saying it. Uh, based on her tone of voice and also based on the fact that when she was given an opportunity by the moderator to like add additional context for that statement, she did not do that.
Are you labor endorsed?
No. Oh, she doesn't like labor, huh?
She just probably said no.
Okay, so we were correct in our analysis there. I'm trying, we're trying to be fair to Lydia. And it, similar thing, uh, with Schaefer in seven is she had this line about, we need to stop vilifying our businesses. The city council like needs to stop vilifying our businesses. And I did not understand what that was a reference to other than maybe the Labor Standards Board, which is an advisory board, which would recommend, uh, policies to protect workers' rights. Offering advice to the city council, not exactly a war on businesses.
First step is that we cannot have city council that consistently seems to vilify our businesses.
But I felt like it was a dog whistle to businesses that like, oh, I'm with you. I'm not with workers. I'm with you. In addition to like her getting on the wrong side of the park workers' union, they accused her of union busting tactics. Just feel like a couple of candidates who are not exactly friends, uh, of workers. So Taylor, you mentioned the, the anger. It's unusual amount of anger compared to conventions elsewhere. I'm thinking like Espada Macca Ska and Whittier have no business being in the same ward. It's like, it's like you took Ward Thirteen and tried to make them coexist with Ward Nine when you do that. Like Espada Macca Ska is kind of a Ward Thirteen kind of place. And Whittier is kind of a, a Ward Nine vibe. Just like the, the most extreme polar opposite places having to coexist. Whittier is a big, big populous, uh, neighborhood and it's kind of why Ward Ten is, uh, a, a strong progressive ward typically.
Well, and you apparently lost, uh, one of our problem delegations in Ward Seven was, uh, was it East Isles?
East, East Isles used to be in Ward Ten, yeah.
Yeah.
That was a couple of cycles ago though, right?
In the two thousand, uh, ten, uh, census, yeah. The redistricting, that's why Tuthill, uh, lost. One of the contributing factors is we gained Whittier, lost East Isles. And Ward Ten cranks have never recovered. They are just eternally angry that they can't, they can't have, uh, their own council member now.
And with every cycle, because Ward Ten is a very dense area and its population continues to increase, it geographically continues to shrink. So in this past cycle, there, there used to be a portion of East Harriet that was in Ward Ten. And that's been redistricted to Ward Thirteen now.
Oddly, I think East Harriet was a little more progressive than Espada Macca Ska. I don't know why that is, but, uh, I think, I think maybe proximity to Uptown plus wealth just gives you an extra dose of resentment. I don't know.
I think it was probably still less progressive than like the, the mean posi- the
Yes.
mean voter in the ward. So it was probably still a net gain for, um, more progressive candidates in Ward Ten.
Uh, let me try out this theory. I, I keep thinking like, all of you are so angry about Aisha Chugtai. And, uh, Aisha Chugtai is to my left, but I'm supporting her now. Uh, but I didn't support her in twenty twenty one. I supported Katie Jones. I'm thinking all of you people who supported like Alicia Gibson in twenty twenty one. If you wanted a moderate council member, you could have supported Katie Jones who could have won. She could have won, would have been more moderate comparatively than Aisha, but you didn't. And now you're like eternally stuck, uh, with Aisha Chugtai, who has won over people like me. Like you could have had a more moderate council member. You didn't want it. They, they will accept nothing less than somebody who panders to all their resentments. And so they're like, they don't want to build a bigger coalition. They're just gonna be forty percent. And that's not, they're not gonna get a majority unless they try to expand their coalition. It's gonna be anti-worker, anti-renter, gonna be anti-transit, anti-pedestrian, anti-bike. Like you're, you're kicking everyone out and saying, I don't need you. I don't need you. You're never gonna win a majority.
Yeah, uh, I, I think that's right. I, I think that all of Minneapolis has had some challenges in expanding their coalition and in like calibrating their message to the ward they're running in. They just kind of run the same platform everywhere. Um, which doesn't feel like a winning strategy, you know? Ward Ten and Ward Thirteen, just for example, or Ward Nine and Ward Thirteen, like are very different places. Um, and they have different voters and constituencies with different needs. Um, like theoretically, no ward in the city is unwinnable, but you have to like calibrate and, uh, to, to what you can feasibly win there. Um, and they, they aren't willing to do that. They just run somebody who checks all of their boxes everywhere.
I think Lydia is falling into the trap of, well, the business community likes me and, uh, these kind of cranky old white people really love me. But like that, those are not the only people. They would show up to all the meetings. They will show up to all the business association meetings and be, be very mad. But like the business owners don't, uh, often are not voters. Uh, as soon as I walked in to the auditorium, like literally as soon as I walked in, there was, uh, an angry man just jawing at people in my precinct. Like nothing had happened yet. We were still registering. And Jason Garcia, the park board candidate, who we no longer refer to as hot dog Larry Jacobs. It's like, oh yeah, that's my nemesis. Uh, just had a lot of backstory with that guy, like showing up to neighborhood association meetings, being disruptive when Jason was president of the wedge. Uh, and then a couple of minutes later, people are messaging me, telling me that Aisha Chugtai got like shoved or shoulder checked in the hallway because some landlord was upset about, I don't know, telling her she, she owes him sixty thousand dollars for something because something wasn't resolved, uh, to his satisfaction. A remarkably angry and contentious convention. People getting kicked out, uh, Sam Doten trying to kick, kick a guy out. Uh, but he refused and was like, F off.
The guy he tried to kick, or the guy that tried, Sam tried kicking out was a lawyer who like lost his license for practicing law without it or something.
Wait, he lost his license for practicing law without his license?
That's correct.
How do you do that?
Well, my understanding was he was suspended for something else unrelated. And then during the period of the suspension, he was pr- still practicing law. That's my understanding.
So Steve Prince we're talking about? I, I've got a long history with this guy, just, uh, being kind of a dick, just an all around dick. And has been resentful for, at least since twenty thirteen about stuff, but we don't have to talk about him. Lydia was going after Chugtai for, uh, saying she wants to abolish the police. She constantly responding to questions at, at candidate forums and at the convention, like, uh, like things like, I will actually answer the question. There's like very snippy kind of comebacks there, uh, accusing Chugtai of not being willing to say the name of a murdered police officer, Jamal Mitchell. Like, uh, the nebulous idea that like the police aren't being resourced or funded or, which is not true. Like, I don't understand how Lydia is going to be better on public safety or police funding, because you're not running to be boss of the police. And police have only been funded fully during, uh, Chugtai's tenure.
Well, it feels like they're just kind of running back the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty three playbooks again, where it's just like repeat, you know, the whole, they don't support the police. They wanted to fund the police, even though it's like, oh no, we've kind of, people have moved on from that and like, you know, we're not running that, that, that race anymore. But it's like the only thing they know how to do.
I've noticed this in ten and seven, similar, uh, attack, like, I'm not, I'm not getting answers to my emails. This council member doesn't listen to me. That is a very common complaint and what I have decided is it's rarely true. It just means the council member didn't agree with me or wasn't able to resolve the problem in the way that I thought it should have been resolved. Like sometimes it doesn't work out for you. Uh, that doesn't mean you weren't listened to. I, I just feel like there's a, a base level of disrespect, like be, like when Lisa Goodman would disagree with me, I didn't think she was stupid or incompetent. I thought like, like Lisa Goodman's pretty smart. She just is wrong and disagrees with me. Like I may hate her over it, but like she's not stupid. And I feel like with some of the progressive council members is like, oh, they're so young and they're stupid and they, they get underestimated. And a lot of times I will talk to people who aren't supporters of, uh, council member Chugtai and they meet her and like, oh, she's prepared. She's smart. I did not expect that because people are so frequently, uh, talking her down as if she is just out of her depths in this job, which is not, not the case. So the result was, uh, disappointing for Chugtai. She had the most support, but didn't get the endorsement, which I will admit that was a, that's a victory for Lydia. I don't know that that's how it will go in November. I, it's a, it's a competitive race. I just think, uh, it's, it's likely that Chugtai will win. Uh, Josh, do you, do you think I'm correct?
I think that's right. Um, I think the Ward Ten race is certainly more competitive than I would have guessed if you had asked me like, you know, three months ago. Um, but, um, yes, I, I think, uh, Aisha Chugtai is still the favorite in that race.
So our battlegrounds, let's see if we agree on battlegrounds. Uh, five, seven, eight, and ten.
Feels right.
Yeah, five, I feel like anything could happen, just a total coin flip. I think, uh, Schaefer is probably favored over Cashman in seven. I would give Soren the edge in eight and, uh, Chugtai of those probably, I don't know, maybe Soren and Chugtai have about the same, uh, pretty good shot at winning in eight and ten.
As far, as hard as they're trying to make Ward Two competitive, I just don't see that happening. And like none of the other wards really stand out to me as even potentially being competitive.
Yeah, because they had to kick, they had to kick out basically half of, uh, the Wandsley supporting delegates in two. Do I have those numbers right?
There were fifty, no, so that's, that's about right, about half, yeah, or maybe a third. Um, but potentially there may have been more, depending on how you look at it, because there were some delegates, um, who like may have showed up otherwise, like if you're like, they're not gonna seat you, like not everybody might have shown up to fight that, so.
Right. Uh, did they let people know ahead of time, like, we're not gonna seat you? Is that how it worked?
I'm not sure.
Uh, and of course in Ward Seven, we're gonna go to Taylor for some reporting on seven. I have, I wrote a thing on wedgelive.com that was very popular called, I, I think I saw Walter Mondale's son get shoved. Uh, just, everyone's talking about that, uh, because this is Minnesota and nothing is more Minnesotan than seeing Walter Mondale's son get shoved at a DFL convention.
The Humphrey Mondale Dinner is next Friday, where Bill Mondale will be presenting awards to the people. Yeah.
I wonder if he'll tell the story of the time he got shoved at the Ward Seven convention.
I don't know. I think he should. I think it'd be interesting.
Taylor, what are your key takeaways from Ward Seven? Is it still fresh in your mind?
Yeah, um, I mean, just the same thing that, you know, that you kind of covered, it's just that it was very similar to ten for me. It was like the, the people that were the worst behaved and like really just like amped up from the whole time, like trying to say that like Cashman was DSA. It was like all these people from like East Isles who were all, it seemed like all, when, you know, once all said and done, they're all people who are connected or volunteer with the neighborhood org. Like, you know, the person who shoved Bill, like the wife is a person at the neighborhood org and like the secretary did something else and someone, it was just like interconnected. Um, we also had the moment of Scott Graham um, revealing his Elizabeth Schaefer shirt before she was officially endorsed, which you know, you're not really supposed to do that as CD five chair. Um, it, it just all was really, it was, it was, uh, I, I remember we recorded an episode in it before it and I said, um, and I remember saying like, oh, it's gonna be horrible. And then I felt bad and I was like, oh, I shouldn't tell people it's gonna be horrible, but it turns out I was right and it kind of was horrible.
You were correct.
And I was.
So close to being a no endorsement. It was like right on the edge of sixty. If like a handful of people had either shown up or voted different, could have been no endorsement, which would have been a, a big win for, uh, Cashman. What I noticed was the, of course, the, the, the law and order theme. Schaefer had Andy Luger, the former US attorney for the state of Minnesota, uh, introduce her. It's even dumber of an argument in seven against Cashman. She has voted, she voted to make MPD the most highly paid big city cops in the country. The police budget has only gone up since she took office, which is like seventeen months ago. Like she's not in the middle of a four-year term. She is, has yet to complete a two-year term. And what we have seen in that time is crime go down. Like no, police funding has gone up, crime has gone down, uh, staffing is up. And I'm not saying she's solely responsible for that, but like, I don't know, if we're gonna give people credit or blame for the things that happen while they're in office, even if they're not the boss of police, maybe she deserves some credit. She sure would be taking the blame. Consistently frustrated by the public safety conversation that we have in the city, uh, as it relates to elections. People are on edge and angry and fearful and acting out at conventions and, uh, the fear of politics is responsible for it. I think I already mentioned, uh, Schaefer pretending like there was a war on business, just proudly, proudly anti-labor, I would say Schaefer was, uh, putting that vibe out to. In addition to her like absolutely no to any additional renter protections.
That and the whole, um, answer to the abortion question that I thought was pretty bad to kind of deflect and say that it's a states rights issue was a weird messaging. And I thought it was weird. She talked about like the state as much as she did. Um, you know, the way that she like said she would like work with walls or something. It's just like, I hadn't, I've never heard a city council candidate talk about Um, you know, the way that she like said she would like work with walls or something. It's just like I hadn't, I've never heard a city council candidate talk about. Like the states as much.
Oh, I remember Michael Rainville promising that he would win gun control and then. And then Steve Fletcher, his opponent, the incumbent that year, it's like, you're gonna go, you're gonna go win gun control? Have you met Republicans? Uh how are you gonna do that as a council member? Uh Josh, can you give us the Ward nine results over the top of North Korea's national anthem?
Uh so Jason Chavez was endorsed by acclamation in Ward nine. Because of that, we don't have exact numbers. Um it has been estimated at ninety nine percent. Because it sounds like there were one or two or three people have voted no. Nobody's quite sure. Taylor says two. Taylor was there, so. I'll take your word for it.
So really, how do how do we have these numbers then? They did they actually cast ballots?
We know, yeah. Yeah, there was um, it was a hundred and ninety nine delegates and then there were two people that. One person, it was like two different motivations. One person was abst- abstain and then one person was no endorsement.
But it but it was a voice vote, right?
No, they held badges.
Oh.
Yeah, I have photos of the badges being held.
Oh.
And Jason knew who both the two people were, so he was just like, was able to.
Fascinating.
There are so few people in opposition in Ward nine that you can just individually identify them and speak to them and find out exactly what they intended. There's only two. Jason Chavez is the true embodiment of North Korea numbers in Ward nine. Also disappearing your opponent in the most spectacular way possible, right? Forcing him to ride off on a lawnmower. I, what uh Marcus Jones, what happened? What was that dropout video? They did an animation of him on a lawnmower. Uh carving into the grass, thank you, and then riding off. That was glorious. I loved that. The best part of his campaign, even better than having never voted in any election at any level in his entire life. But deciding he wanted to be elected to the city council. If we had had a chance to get to know Marcus Jones better, I think he could have ranked. At least in the top five of the clown candidate Hall of Fame. He just didn't get enough airtime.
He didn't try, I mean, he tried. He just um didn't do enough.
I mean, did he try? He didn't even make it to the convention. He bear, he got in like a month or two ago and didn't even pursue it to the convention.
He was one of the few of them to try to, or like the we love Minneapolis or all of Minneapolis candidates to try to make a um. Like Twitter account and use it. Most of them had kind of like, you know, given up on that, but he he tried.
I remember being here with all of you uh before any of this and saying, this guy. Is not gonna go anywhere.
Yo.
I was right. So he's a firefighter. He's a plagiarist. H- his website steals text from Award eleven candidate Jameson Whiting's website. He did not delete Jameson Whiting's name from the plagiarized text. So I can't get past this, Josh. He should never be able to live this down.
I don't, I don't think I said he was definitely gonna win.
Cause you love, you just, you have a fire honks calendar on your wall there?
I do not.
And just, all it takes with you is firefighter and you're sold.
So I don't think I ever said he was gonna win. I said that he seemed like the kind of person who'd be a formidable candidate.
This guy, despite his website challenges, is a firefighter, which I think would be appealing to some people. And the other candidate opposing Jason Chavez is Dan Orban. I I would like the the firefighters' union to know on the record that I stood up for the firefighters here, so.
But regardless, uh I was wrong.
Yeah.
You were right. He was not a formidable candidate because formidable candidates do not uh drive off into the sunset. On a riding lawnmower uh days before the um DFL convention.
So I'm speaking directly to Marcus. Whoever roped you into this does not have your best interests at heart. Cut them out of your life. Whoever told you this was a good idea? We know it wasn't you because you never voted for anything. You you have no political bone in your body whatsoever. They just thought, here's my friend, the firefighter. It takes more, it takes more than uh having a, you know, the right bio to run for office. You should have an interest in it. A single issue at least.
That's true. I don't, I don't know what his issue was.
Right. We don't know, we barely got to know him. We don't know what he would have campaigned on.
Being anti-Jason Chavez seems to be, seemed to be his one issue.
His heart wasn't in it.
But yeah, my guess is uh he took a look at the delegate numbers after doing some canvassing and talking to people. And uh after what happened to, you know, Brian Strawn in Ward one, he decided I I don't want that life for me. And uh decided to drop out to avoid that.
Do we know what's going on with Brian Strawn in Ward one? Is he in or out?
So somebody told me that Brian Strawn had reached out to him and that Brian said he was still running. Um this is the same source who told me Marquez was going to drop out and he was right about that. Uh so I reached out and was like, so what's going on with Brian? Um and he was like, yeah, I don't know. I haven't heard from him since then, so. Um Brian Strawn is still on the all of Minneapolis list of endorsed candidates, so they appear to think he is still running.
I feel like we can use common sense that when people don't do the most basic things. That constitute running for office, like have a functioning website for like months at a time. We can use our common sense to say they are not running. We don't have to take them seriously just because they assert that they are running. Cause you have to do stuff.
Oh, speaking of all Minneapolis, they have now endorsed Dan Orban in Ward nine now that Marquez has dropped out.
Yeah, I you, so I used to call him Hungarian dictator Dan Orban and then I got a message from Dan Orban. The initial message was, that's kinda funny. It was like, uh huh, then he wanted to meet with me, I think. And uh well, maybe I shouldn't get into the email conversations I've had. Anyway, I got a subs- I got a subsequent message that it was kind of maybe because I didn't respond to the first message. Who was, he was be, he became upset that I was using the phrase Hungarian dictator Dan Orban to describe him. This is my way of apologizing to Dan Orban. I won't call you Hungarian dictator Dan Orban anymore on the Wedge Life podcast. And I, I've heard and read your messages and it won't, it won't happen not on this podcast anymore.
I also got a message from Dan Orban.
Did you meet with him?
He wanted to meet with me too.
Yeah, he was, um I've had a couple tweets because I I, he doesn't, he has a website, but it's not like a like. Yeah, it's GitHub and I tweeted about that a couple of times and he was, he was kinda like, yeah, I saw you don't like my GitHub. I was like, well, just get a domain and put it there. It's easy to fix. I have to respond still.
He wasn't mad at me for anything that I recall. He just wanted to meet with me.
I think he wanted to, me to think he thought I was funny, but then when I didn't respond, he wanted me to know that he didn't think I was funny.
In flag for all your nicknames, this and the um the the Weiner pointing out Josh Basse. Can't say that to either.
I'm a bad person.
I guess, oh.
All, so with uh Josh Basse, I was just pointing out that other people were telling me his middle name was Weiner. I was making fun of them for being childish. Like the Soren Stevenson campaign is doing a negative behind the scenes whisper campaign.
Soren Stevenson campaign is not doing a behind the scenes whisper campaign.
About Weiner.
No, no.
Well, not you, Josh. You don't know who my sources are. It absolutely was coming from the Soren Stevenson orbit. As a joke, though. Josh, you give the results in Ward eleven over the North Korea anthem.
So in Ward eleven, after one ballot, Jameson Whiting was endorsed with seventy seven percent of the vote. Defeating challenger Marion DeMello, who has subsequently dropped out of the race.
Anything notable happen there other than Marion DeMello running kind of an inexplicable campaign?
Because she dropped out before the results were announced, uh the chair. Uh technically under DFL rules, under those circumstances, you can not share the results. But the Ward eleven delegates were not having that. They wanted to see their North Korea numbers for JMo. So they voted that the full results be released and that's how we knew that Jameson got seventy seven percent. Um, there were also some delays in getting the results due to what. My understanding is some spreadsheet problems. Um and finally, uh Marion DeMello during her uh initial candidate speech. She got her heels stuck in between some like platforms on the stage. And so there was a moment at the end where she had to like pause and like pull her foot out of her shoe, reach down. And then like yank the shoe out of the floor. Um.
Was it graceful?
Uh I I think as graceful as you can be under those circumstances.
Uh did she say anything weird? I I've I heard there's a weirdness factor with her. And but I don't know if that was expressed in any way at the convention.
I think there there was a weirdness factor at times. Um no, no particular comments stand out to me right now, but.
And Jameson Whiting, can anyone decipher Jameson Whiting for me? Because Jameson Whiting has, what is it? Steve Kramer, the the business bros, the downtown business bros have embraced him. But also it's unclear if he's like a sleeper agent for uh Minneapolis for the many. Carol Becker is probably referred to him as a socialist a time or two.
You know, mysterious unity candidate Jameson Whiting baffles us all. Um, uh a lot of people were unsure where to place him for a while. Um he has been endorsed by Minneapolis for the many. They have celebrated his victory.
Oh, really? Both sides are celebrating his victory?
Apparently, um uh Attorney General Keith Ellison has endorsed him, Emma Greenman, Angela Conley. But also former Ward eleven council member Scott Benson and Steve Kramer. Um, he's endorsed by the firefighters' union, but also Stonewall DFL and Minnesota Young DFL. It's a real, it's a real mixed bag. Uh he sees, he's, I I guess he really is a moderate. Um and. I don't know.
Since I don't know when we started agreeing on candidates like this. When does that happen anymore?
Jameson Whiting's gonna heal Ward eleven. He's gonna heal the city and bring us all together, John.
He should just run for mayor.
Uh yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
Apparently, everyone can agree.
It is a little bit surprising. We didn't have a mayoral uh campaign like that. Where we could just agree, we've had this fry guy for quite a while. Do we really wanna be on term three? Like, could we do a fresh start with somebody who's maybe not even all that far from him ideologically? I can say something about Jameson Whiting. Uh I invited him on the podcast and he said maybe after the convention. So that's how, that's how eager he was to tell his uh to campaign on the Wedge Live podcast. I also invited DeMello and just no response from DeMello, which I think is my comeuppance for ignoring Dan Orban. A little karma for me. So a poll came out with the headline, so Minneapolis for the many is the the progressive pack in the city. They hired a real pollster to do a real poll. Uh some have criticized it uh for being a push poll, but that's not what a push poll is. It could be, it's a partisan poll, but like it's real, it's a real poll. And the the favorability questions were asked first. Am I right, Josh?
Correct. They endorse, they asked the favorability questions first and then the the message testing questions last.
Yeah, a push poll would be priming people with negative information and then asking later how they feel about those candidates. Which is not what this is. And so the headline uh on like the press release that they put out was like a twenty point difference. In Mayor Fry's, is it favorability?
Yes.
Since twenty twenty one, uh I could believe that he's less popular than he was in twenty twenty one, simply by the passage of time, like. Oh boy, am I tired of this guy. I am so tired of this guy. But I don't know that I buy that it's twenty points difference and maybe what explains that is the twenty twenty one poll was a different pollster, so. You know, different pollsters have different methodologies and will come up with, the results are not necessarily comparable. And they use a different uh screen. I think likely voters was what was used in the Care eleven twenty twenty one poll. And the twenty twenty five poll from Minneapolis for the many was just voters. So a little more, a wider audience of people, maybe people who didn't vote last time or unlikely to vote this year were included in the. In the poll, so I don't know if I buy twenty points difference, but I could buy that he is less popular than he was in twenty twenty one.
I think that's right. I think it's probably directionally accurate, but for a lot of different reasons, like. Twenty points, hard to say. Um we'll learn more as we get later into the year and like news organizations start to do their own. Own polling. Um I think that usually doesn't happen till the fall.
Yeah, do you wanna, do you wanna s- sponsor a poll, John? Do you have money for that? If I can. I'll join up with the Star Tribune Care eleven uh poll and I will throw in a free mug if they will include my name on the poll.
Perfect. Oh, and we can get to back to talking about the poll, but I did look up what Carol Becker said about Jameson Whiting. Um Jameson Whiting is listed in both the neo socialist and the moderate column. And then there's two asterisks and it says, Jameson Whiting admits he is not trying to pick sides. On the one hand, he does believe the city needs more police. He opposes rent control. He is not interested in a city owned grocery or closing I ninety four.
Wait, a city owned grocery, a litmus test issue this year?
He did not apply for endorsement from the DSA, but he also does not want to immediately remove encampments. He is pro bike lane. He is endorsed by neo socialists like Angela Conley, Keith Ellison and Greta Callahan. It did not complete the we love Minneapolis screener either. So far, he has not put his vision for the city on paper to know which way he would vote were he to be elected. We will keep following him to see if he articulates that he will vote one way or another. So I'll say first of all, those are all Carol Becker's words, not mine.
Um, she makes him sound good, though. That sounds like a person who is very aligned with me.
And maybe someone who's fairly aligned with with Ward eleven. You probably wouldn't want uh. A full on DSA aligned type, whatever that means, running in Ward eleven.
People think.
Although apparently Emily Koski is DSA aligned, so.
Yeah, I get the impression that just because I'm just a brash uh bad boy, that people assume. I'm a DSA radical, but I feel like maybe I have Ward eleven politics. Is that possible? Maybe I don't have wedge radical politics.
Do you need to be exiled from Ward ten and move to to Ward eleven?
If we lived in saner times, I would be exiled, like.
This gonna be, this gonna be Tangle Town Live now?
Maybe. Like in the mid twenty teens, socialists on Twitter just hated my guts. They hated me so bad. And now we're in a different time and I don't think I've changed. I think the world has changed around me and I'm embraced by my DSA brothers and sisters.
DSA aligned to Wedge Live.
Yeah, DSA, me and Emily Koski just joined the DSA.
You should get Emily Koski to have like another, like like an exit interview, like now that she's on her way out.
You think she would do that?
Why not? She's got nothing to lose. She's not running for anything anymore.
Right, she, she endorsed I should Chuck Di uh right before the convention. What, what should I, what do you wanna know? What, what do the two of you want to know from Emily Koski?
I'd be curious to know her, more of her thinking on like how she came to be like the Emily Koski we knew. Of several years ago compared to where we are now. Um certainly I've heard a lot of rumors from various sources on that. But it'd be interesting to hear from her directly and she doesn't have to put like campaign spin behind that anymore.
Right, that's what I wanted her to do when I talked to her and I don't feel like she was giving it to me. Like I wanted to hear, this is what I have seen from the mayor and it's real bad. And we need, we can do better. Like it was, it was a little bit softened.
She could also talk more about like why she's not running anymore, like her take on like city politics. Um she probably got some interesting insights on the budgets and she's the budget vice chair. And was, if I recall correctly, was the budget chair under the prior council majority.
And along these lines, I also like would wanna talk to Jim Rowder. I haven't tried to. To find his contact information.
Be fun.
Like he endorsed Koski, the former city attorney under Fry endorsed Koski. And I'm like, what is the story there? He's got stories to tell. Uh Taylor, I'm regretting that you and I didn't do a mall episode where we shop for clothes for our uh various campaign finance related legal wrangling.
I just ordered something on Amazon because they closed the H and M in Uptown where I normally would have gone for any of my court needs. Or the Macy's Downtown. Everything's closed. Where do you buy court clothes nowadays? I'm not leaving the city.
It's true. These are all things I'm struggling with. I just wish, I wish I could go online and order something, but like you have a normal sized human body. And my dimensions are way off. I, if I bought something online, it would go to my belly button. Like I could buy a large size and it, uh extra large and it would still just go to my belly button. Uh like I need to go to a special. Uh shop for people with abnormal bodies.
Where do the Wolves players shop?
It's true.
Probably like a boutique over in the North Loop.
I've done so much Googling, like I've, I've found a. I've done so much Googling, like I've, I've found a store called American tall dot com. I'm trying to decide, do I trust a website called American tall dot com? I don't know.
Sure. Why not?
I don't know.
Target, does Target cater to the tall?
I, I don't know that they would sell anything for like, as our lawyer has termed it, uh, job interview clothes. Like we're children, like we need to be told how to dress. Did you take offense when Dan told us that?
How did you get told that? I only learned that from you. So I was not.
You were there.
Really? Oh, I guess I just tuned that out.
Attention during our legal briefings.
Well, uh, apparently what Dan posted on, on Blue Sky was that he, he, what he meant was that it, it's supposed to be a good thing. It was like, hey, you don't have to wear a suit. Like just, you know, dress up a little bit.
Do people not wear suits to job interviews anymore? I don't even know what job interview clothes are.
I mean, I assume he means like a button up, well, for, for John, I don't know as much about female fashion. But like a button up shirt and like, you know, uh, nice pants or something.
Can't you borrow something from like Mike Norton? He seems to know how to dress like a respectable.
Norton is a, a short man. He's a tiny, tiny.
But he could provide you with fashion advice. You could go for a shopping trip with Mike Norton.
Hey, Mike Norton is the kind of D-bag who has like profanity embroidered into the lining of his jackets. I'm not going around like that.
You can't wear that. That wouldn't be ideal.
Has anyone been shown, has he ever opened up his jacket and is like, look, that's what I have embroidered in here?
Yeah.
Do you remember what it says?
I don't remember exactly, but I do remember this bit.
Uh, well, it's probably something like bad MF'er. I don't even remember what it was, but it's something very lame. Sorry, Mike Norton.
Mike Norton can take you to shopping in congressional district too, so he can support local businesses in his congressional campaign. My very real congressional campaign.
Mike Norton, pick me up in your electric, uh, what kind of car is that? Is it?
Frunk.
Uh, like an electric Corvette? I forget what he drives, but let's, uh, go shopping together in your electric car.
Yeah, I just ordered some dress and I, I put it on, I kind of feel like I either, I look like, uh, I kind of felt like, um, maybe like uh, Margaret Thatcher going to a funeral. So I don't really know, um, I also don't know how to buy job interview clothes. The last job interview I had was like twenty nineteen. I don't even know.
Yeah. The world is passing us by. I want to attribute it to us being just so successful that we can't conceive of having to dress to impress.
Why do I have to go there in person? St. Paul? I don't go to St. Paul. This is, this is such a burden, honestly, making me go to St. Paul.
It is.
Going to St. Paul is an undue burden placed on you by this abusive process.
Absolutely. The big, probably the biggest, honestly.
You know what else is a burden? I, sitting through Microsoft Word ads. Josh, you can relate to this cause you're a Google Docs fan. But like, I don't, I don't pay for Microsoft Word.
I have, I have Microsoft Word as well, but.
But like, when I'm reviewing the affidavits that I have to attest to and sign and the, all the filings to like make sure it's all true and accurate. Every couple of minutes, I'm sitting through a Microsoft Word ad before I can go back to, to doing it. Hours of my life watching Microsoft Word ads just to participate in my own legal defense. This is what, this is what Becca Thompson has done to me. Clothes I gotta buy, Microsoft Word ads, my lawyer treating me like a child.
Having to print documents. I had to walk to the Hyatt to print something.
Right. I don't have a printer.
Oh, who has a printer? And then I was like, oh, I don't have, I'll just e-sign it. And Dan's like, oh, we don't do e-signing. It's like, isn't it twenty twenty five?
Come on, lawyer Dan. I know. Pro bono.
I did, one thing I, when did the legal system move away from using legal sized paper? Remember that stuff? It was like eight, eight by like fourteen.
I remember legal pads. Did, were all the pages actually?
Legal pa, legal paper was specifically, it was like.
Nope. I know what you're talking about. Yeah. Oversized paper. Yeah.
Yeah. Do they not do that anymore? My legal documents were normal. They mailed us our tweets. Like, we feel like.
So you want, you want fancier, uh, documents for your abusive legal process.
Yeah, the long ones. We, we get our tweets mailed to us in color. So that was nice. Now I know how Stansel felt, you know, just coming to me in the mail. You said this.
Right. Yeah. Just pages of, on pages of like screenshots of Taylor's face doing things for the wedge live. I had, Josh, I had to use you as an alibi.
That's right. That's right. I heard about that. Yeah.
I hope Dan approves of us, uh, talking about this.
I think this, yeah, this is all stuff that's in the legal documents.
Yeah, this is all in the public record. We can talk about this.
Just talking about what we have to go through.
Uh, there is a particular day with, during which I was with Josh Martin, recording a podcast episode. Therefore, your honor, I couldn't possibly have committed the campaign finance violation.
So I have alibis.
Is there anything else that we need to talk about here? Oh, Josh, I wanted to get back to the, the poll.
Oh, yeah, I distracted.
Oh, yeah.
Because there were some follow-on questions, not related to the approval, that you were pointing out to me that were interesting to you. Do you have those at your fingertips?
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of question, of message testing questions. Um, and they have two versions of the polling results. They have the results related to everyone. And then they have one specifically related to just undecided voters. Which is probably most important for the message, message testing questions. Um, but, and, uh, it looks like it was an A B test. So everybody got slightly different versions of each of the questions. Um, but they asked whether various arguments were like very convincing, somewhat convincing or not convincing or not sure. Um, as to reasons why you should not vote for Jacob Fry. Um, so they talked about, uh, property taxes have gone up. Um, they talked about, uh, the cost of housing in Minneapolis. Um, uh, let's see. Um, oh, they didn't all have A B tests, only, only those two, it looks like. Um, the police department hasn't been reformed enough. Um, Fry vetoes a bunch of stuff. Uh, not enough progress on, um, uh, homelessness in Minneapolis. Uh, Fry has no vision for public safety and undermined solutions like the behavioral crisis response team. There's a whole bunch of these. Keeps going.
Didn't you pu- point out, uh, some in particular that, uh, you mentioned too, that I found particularly compelling, but I can't remember what it was. I think it was like, uh, most of the undecided has a highly unfavorable opinion of Fry.
Yes. So undecideds, right? So then you're taking out the voters who like are going to vote for Fry for sure. So the undecided, um, favorable, unfavorable for Fry was even lower than overall. So among overall people, it's, um, thirty percent favorable, fifty-one percent unfavorable. Among undecideds only, his favorables were fourteen percent favorable, fifty-six percent unfavorable. So what that seems to suggest, it's like, it's not like those undecideds are deciding whether or not to vote for Jacob Fry. Most of them have already decided they're not voting for Jacob Fry. They're just deciding which of Fry's challengers they want to vote for. Or in which order they want to rank them more specifically, since we arrange voting in Minneapolis.
And I'm reading from the poll, eight percent of twenty twenty one Fry voters plan to vote for someone else. Twenty-nine percent of twenty twenty one Fry voters are undecided.
Losing a, a significant chunk potentially even of his own support from twenty twenty one.
Although it's always been my impression that he gets support from people who maybe don't care for him all that much. You just have a very low opinion, an even lower opinion of his opponents.
It very well could be, right? Was, we've seen a lot of that on the federal level, um, especially like twenty sixteen. Like people didn't like Hillary Clinton or Donald Trump. And a lot of the race came down to like, who do they dislike more?
Okay. Uh, and one final play of the North Korea national anthem for, uh, Taylor, uh, who defeated all of us by going to the most conventions uh, of anyone in the city. I think eight, eight of the thirteen. This is Taylor's fatherland.
But you know, Jason pointed out too, that that's, I did kind of have the stats going to like nine and six and one. Whereas Jason did like an eight hour shift at like Ward five. And so if we, if, you know, there's a lot of ways we could measure this, but.
Yeah, you basically treated conventions like, uh, like a party bus tour of various bars. You would go to one, you'd have a THC infused beverage, then you would get back on the party bus and go to the next one.
That's true. It's true. Had to, had to, had to get the North Korea numbers as much as I could. One thing we didn't mention was the incident at nine where they adjourned before letting the mayor speak. Which the Fry team was not happy about.
Run through the details on that. Let's do that.
Yeah. And my understanding, and this is based on like public statements, like this is a big, big secret. Like people posted on social media that they intentionally adjourned the convention so that Fry could not speak. Like he was waiting in the parking lot and they adjourned the convention before he could speak.
Yeah.
And the, you know, the, yeah, the one thing that people pointed out, you know, in response to that was just the fact that the way that conventions were timed that day, it was Ward nine started an hour before Ward eleven. So most people went to nine and then they went to eleven and then they went to ten. So Fry apparently went to eleven, then nine and then on to ten, but so he didn't. So it's like, so I think, I think the, I, I, I think people at Ward nine just kind of also felt like he didn't like prioritize them. Like the other candidates did.
It was an odd choice to go to nine later in the day. Like it was pretty obvious going in that Ward nine was going to be done first. So most candidates headed to Ward nine first. So they made sure to get to speak before they adjourned.
Like, I mean, I, I heard out of nine, he, like the Fry campaign didn't get a single city delegate even. So I'm not sure.
Oh, really? In the whole ward?
That's, that's what I heard.
That's, I, I haven't been able to confirm this, but that's what my sources have told me as well.
Well, let's play the North Korea anthem for the people of Ward nine. This is their fatherland. Okay. Well, uh, thank you everyone for listening to this, uh, special Minneapolis DFL Ward Convention wrap-up episode. We're on to the city convention next in July, right? Park board. Uh, candidates will be endorsed and mayor.
And BET.
And BET. Let's not forget BET.
The whole Wedge Live team will be there.
Yeah.
And we're all delegates or alternates. We're insiders.
I, uh, BET news, I used Steve Brant lit to kill a bug. It was the only thing I had available. So you, I crushed a bug using Steve Brant's face a couple of days ago.
Well, you know, bless him. I hope he gets his endorsement.
I think he can handle it. Uh, he has no opponents, so.
He's playing for sympathy. He's like, I have no opponents. Please, please vote for me.
North Korea numbers for Steve Brant.
Imagine the damage to my ego if you chose no one over me. It's his campaign. Plus he's, I like Steve. Even if, even if he was on stage for Josh Basse, which I feel like was a questionable decision.
Oh, I don't know. I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
He, he was on stage for Josh Basse.
Maybe he was lost, like that one woman when Soren was speaking. I'm going to assume he was lost.
Did, did Steve endorse, did Steve endorse Soren last time?
In twenty twenty-three, yes, Steve Brant endorsed Soren. He has not endorsed anyone yet this cycle.
That's kind of a weird flip.
I don't know. It's like.
She doesn't like Jenkins, maybe.
Well, this has been the Wedge Live podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you to Josh Martin and Taylor Darlene. And, uh, thanks to you all for listening.